Good evening. I don't think our microphones are on. Is it on? I hear a call to order, the October 23rd, 2023, Council Meeting of the City of Mayfield Heights. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Balastrea.
Present.
Mr. DeJohn.
Here.
Mr. Mano.
Here.
Mr. Monaco.
Here.
Mrs. Sabetta.
Here.
Mrs. Snyder. Mrs. Tressi. Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President Diane Snyder is not available this evening, so I will be taking her place as pro tem. We will now move on to the acceptance of the minutes of our October 9th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting. I hope everyone's had the opportunity to look over the minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. Monaco, seconded by Mr. Balastrea. Are there any changes, deletions, or amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes of our October 9th Committee of the Whole Meeting are now approved. We'll move on to approval of the minutes of our October 9th, 2023 Council Meeting. Hope everyone's had the opportunity to look over these minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. Mano, seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. Are there any suggested changes, deletions, or amendments to these minutes? Seeing none, all signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The minutes of our Council Meeting of October 9th, 2023 have been approved as written. Next on the agenda is correspondence and announcements. Does anyone on Council have any correspondence or announcements to share? Good evening, Mr. Murphy. Since we have no correspondence or announcements, we will now move on to reports of officers, and we will begin with our Mayor, Mayor Disico.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the meeting tonight. Last week, I had the pleasure of speaking at the Mayfield Area Chamber of Commerce Annual State of the Cities Event. I'd like to thank the MAC for holding the event. It's a great way to get to know what all of our neighbor, neighboring cities are up to and what their projects and activities are. And I gotta say, ours were the best, but I'm prejudiced, so. Friday evening, we hosted our first city event at the Aquatic and Community Center. It was our Halloween event. I'm sure Mr. Mano may comment on that further, so I won't take his report. Also, AECOM will be performing mainline dye testing on the sewers on Lander Road. Actually, it was today was supposed to take place. Also, it was, uh, mainline dye testing was already conducted on Temple, Radnor, Longwood, and Washington. So, we just want the residents to know that we are going ahead with that, and we are trying to do our best to figure out a solution for that area. The Service Department has taken possession of a new loader, and I believe it's out back. If anyone wants to take a look, is it out back? Yep. Also, two new businesses opened in October. The Cheesesteak Wizard, which is on Mayfield Road, which I heard is really good. I've not had a chance to, uh, to try it out, but I've heard it's, uh, really good. And ICP Industrial Commercial Properties moved into their offices on Parkland Drive. And then finally, I would like to announce that I received formal notification that Mrs. Fagan will be retiring January 31st, 2024. Boo, his boo. I thank her for what she's been able to accomplish the last five years. And you have left, you definitely will be leaving the department in a better place, so thank you. But I just wanted everyone to know that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, that's very sad news. We will now move on to Director of Law, Mr. Murphy. Are you ready? Okay, let's, let's ask Director.
Thank you. I have no formal reports this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Fagan? Mr. DeJohn.
I did have a question for Mr. Murphy.
He hasn't done his report yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
He's getting more urgent. Yeah.
I told you to keep talking. I have no formal report, but I would like to note that the attorney for both the CVS property as well as the Dollar General property contacted me and said that they are discussing the preliminary approval regarding the design for the development of that property, and they requested that the motions on the agenda regarding the preliminary approval be held again like they were at the last meeting to give them a chance to talk, shall we say? First of all. Then, secondly, I don't have the agenda here, but the, the resolution, or the ordinance regarding buying the piece of property along I-271. I'm still reviewing the title reports, so I don't have a recommendation, so I would like that tabled because it's on third reading this evening. I would request that it be tabled.
That's all. Thank you. Mr. DeJohn, you had a question for Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, a couple. So, are we gonna table the motions tonight for?
Just not make them.
Okay, all right. And then the other question is, is something that I've been curious about liquor permits and renew of liquor permits. So, do we have a right to deny a liquor permit or a renewal of a liquor permit?
No. Council does not have a right, the city does not have a right, the administration does not have a right to deny one. The state is the only one that has jurisdiction over liquor permits, and the state sends out notices to the city to indicate that so-and-so has either applied for a permit or has applied for a renewal of a permit. And does Council want to have a hearing? And Council then can either say, no, we don't want a hearing, or request a hearing. And during the hearing, then Council would make its objections to, say, the renewal of a permit known, and it would be up to the state then to determine whether or not the permit should be granted. And it's tough to get a liquor permit that has been issued not renewed. The biggest thing is sales to minors or sales after hours or violations of state law.
And we have 30 days to ask for that, right?
It's on the form. Maybe, maybe 30, maybe 60. I forget.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for our Law Director? Okay, well, we will move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards, and we will begin with our Building Committee, Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the agenda tonight, we have three ordinances. One is 2023-322, 2023-23, and 2023-27. Those ordinances were introduced at the last meeting. The first one pertains to political signs in the residential area. 2023-27 pertains to political signs in non-residential areas. And 2023.23 pertains to roof and siding. There is some minor changes that we need to make on the roof and siding ordinance, and I will discuss that as it comes up on the agenda.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Monaco? Okay, we'll move on to Finance and Audit Committee, Mr. DeJohn.
Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Fagan has let me know that the budget bill will be ready by November 13th, and then following that time, we'll be calling for a meeting to discuss that. We're probably gonna look at an early morning meeting, so hopefully, council, any of the council members that want to attend that can, can come, so very early in the morning, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. DeJohn? Moving on, we'll go to our Legislative Committee, Mrs. Sabetta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report. The Legislative Committee did not meet.
Thank you. We'll move on to Public Works and Services Committee, Mr. Balastrea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a report. The Public Works Committee met this past Friday. The 2023 road program was discussed as to the completion. New PCRs were given to the committee. That stands for the pavement condition ratings of all our streets. And the 2024 road program was discussed. The 2024 sidewalk program was not finalized. The mayor spoke briefly about the dye testing in his report. Very soon, there'd be dye testing on the private properties that had requested to be dye testing. All the items that was recommended by the Public Works Committee was over budget. I will schedule another meeting as soon as the budget is finalized, and we'll make adjustments to our 24 road program. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Balastrea. Any questions for Mr. Balastrea? We'll move on to Recreation and Parks Committee, Mr. Mano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the mayor previously stated, we did have our first event at the new community building, at the Aquatic Center. It went very well. We had 75 kids that had a great time at the Halloween party. And thanks to all the people that helped out with that and for being the first, the first event in the new facility, I think it went flawlessly. It was, it was really well, well-done. Senior Subcommittee has its next meeting tomorrow. That's Tuesday, October 24th, at 3:30 PM. And our next park and recreation meeting is tomorrow evening, October 24th, at 7:00 PM. Both meetings will be at the Aquatic and Community Center. Indoor pickleball began at 8 o'clock this morning. We had 40 participants come in to play, and more info can be found on our website or give us a call at 440-442-2627. Continue to watch social media and the website for updates as programs continue to develop at the Aquatic Community Center. That's my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mano? Okay, we will move on to Safety and Transportation Committee, and that is my committee. I do not have a report this evening. I do know that the Police Department does have two resolutions on the agenda, and we will discuss those as we proceed through the meeting. We will next move on to Board of Zoning Appeals, Mrs. Sabetta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I have no report. The Board of Zoning did not meet.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Planning Committee, Mr. Balastrea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Commission had no agenda, so I have no report.
Thank you. We will now move on to the public portion. We will pursue into our city code. Each person will be allotted five minutes to speak with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for the entire public portion. If you are here in connection with an agenda item, this is your opportunity to address council. However, please note that there, this is not an opportunity for debate or slighted comments. If you would like to be heard this evening, please fill out one of the forms at the back table and bring it up front. At this point, you will, I will call on you, and you can come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and speak into the microphone so we can hear you very clearly. It is now 7:20, and I will open the public portion. I have Denver Berry at 1592 Lander Road.
Hello, I'm Denver Berry, 1592 Lander Road.
Mr. Berry, can you turn the mic on if you hit the button? Thank you.
Hello, okay. Denver Berry, 1592 Lander Road. I wanted to, I sent everyone an updated plan for the building that I would like to have approved because the previous drawing, there was a mistake. And it has to do with the height of the eaves. The eaves, the proper height and the correct height is only 12 feet high. And with a 212 pitch, so the very peak should only be about 16 feet. So, it's a lot, it's a lot shorter all the way around than the previous plan. The previous plan had it at 17 feet and a 25-foot peak, and that was completely wrong. So, I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. And then I also wanted to make myself available if you have any questions because I'd like to have that approved. I believe it's definitely, you know, to the, to the best interest of the city and everyone else to have things that are accumulated over the years put in a storage, you know, building. My particular property was used, you know, for 22 years, a nursery. The equipment on there was accumulated over a period of time, materials, equipment, so forth, so on, and over a large period of time for the use of the property. There's a, there's a lot of things that I'd like to put inside of a building. Just like a smaller property, homeowners, they accumulate a lot of things, and they want to put it in a shed. Well, the average lot, which makes my particular property a little bit unique, is that it's much bigger, and that creates, that creates the hardship. It's the fact that there's really nothing in the zoning because it's peculiar compared to the rest of the properties surrounding it. So, that in itself makes it so that there's, you know, there's a, there's a mechanism for it, and that's coming to council and asking for approval of the building. But other than that, there's, there's really nothing to address properties that are as large as mine. But use of the property is not going to change. It's not gonna change the intent of the ordinance. It's just gonna make it so that all the things that are, I guess some people would say, scattered amongst the property will be inside neatly stored, and I think that benefits everyone that has any concern about it. So, you know, I'm here if you want to ask me any questions. Otherwise, I would appreciate if you would approve my request.
If we have questions, we will address them when we get to the resolution.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard this evening? That's okay. And you can just go over to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, I missed the first part of the meeting. Did you discuss Popeyes Chicken?
We haven't discussed anything at all as of yet.
Will that be discussed tonight?
It will not be discussed this evening.
Well, I was reading my son's news last week, and I thought it was going to be discussed at this meeting, which is why I came. My name's Pat Brewer. I live at 200 Fox Hollow Drive, Unit 303, Woodhawk Community. And I've lived in Ohio, in, in Mayfield Heights most of my life since third grade on. So, when I saw that the Popeyes was going to be coming into town possibly, I've been counting, we have what, maybe eight or 10 fast food restaurants already? And obviously, you need commercial activity, you need to bring in revenue. If it's going to be placed between CVS and the strip that's behind it, I hope that you, this is another drive-through, another fast, you drive down Mayfield Heights and it's car, you know, agencies, it's, it's car repair parts, it's repair, you know, and fast food restaurants. That's what we have a great deal of in Mayfield Heights already. So, I hate to see it come in, but if it needs to, I hope maybe you can do something. Like Taco Bell is really a nice-looking building. Chick-fil-A has the nice landscaping in front of it between that and the street. And maybe you can do something, if it's coming, to keep it from being as, as garish as I understand. In my mind, I think it's not gonna be in addition to the community aesthetically. But if you could, if it's coming, I hope you'll do everything possible to make it be discreet, not as nasty as some other fast food restaurants are. We have such a great deal of them. Thanks, that was it.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Thank you, Mr. Pedo. If you want to step over to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Council. My name is Andrew Pedo, and my address is 6589 Kingswood Drive in Mayfield Heights. And my, I'd like to start out to address certain things that were said about me in the 9/25 meeting. And these are of a very serious nature, and I want to bring them to your attention since you voted on a resolution at that time and may vote further on a resolution concerning my property. In the 9/25 meeting, the first neighbor who addressed the situation with my property said that he had to send an email to the city in order to ask for help. There was water between the two houses, and a neighbor that lives next to him informed him of the water. He did not see it first. And so, he, he said, quote, "I had to send an email to the city in order to ask for help." That's a false statement because I was never given the chance to address the problem. He never gave me that chance. In his speech, he called, he said he was, hoped to be a good neighbor, but that's not being a good neighbor. He also made the statement about me that, quote, "My neighbor doesn't know how to live properly and cleanly. He owes to the rest of our community on our street to live properly and the right way. This council needs to know that this neighbor is not my judge, not my guardian, and not my god." He also addressed the neighbor on the other side of me, and he said, "The neighbor on the other side of his property witnesses a lot more than I do in terms of debris on his property, not keeping his property properly cut correctly on the grass and other issues." That statement is false. A thick hedge, which I meticulously maintain, separates my property from the neighbor who he's, who was being talked about on the other side. I've received compliments from several neighbors on that hedge. And if I was letting my grass be overgrown, as I was accused of, Lenny Morgano, who inspects our street, would certainly have given me a citation. He does his job. And contrary to the statement made by the neighbor, that implies he doesn't. This neighbor claimed that it is his opinion that the house, my house, he said, quote, "My opinion is that the house is destroyed. I don't believe there is any way for the house to be rehabilitated, and it must be razed or demolished." That's another word for razed. Again, this neighbor has elected himself as judge over my property, never having even been in the house. This is very disturbing to me. The neighbor, the other neighbor on the other side, who was previously referenced by the first neighbor, said this. She's been living 12 years at that address. It will be 12 years in November. I have had issues with Mr. Pedo. I witnessed food being buried, no garbage being thrown out. Okay, now, let's, let's use our heads here. For her statement to be true, she would have had to open the lid of my Kimball can every trash day and inspect the contents of that can. For that statement to be true, that was or would be trespassing on my property, which would be a violation of my civil rights. She also made this statement. "The stench of buried garbage is so bad, I can't sit outside on my front porch in the summer." That's an absolute lie. Several persons, including a building inspector, stood by my front walk and smelled no such stench. And I never was cited for any sort of stench at all by the building department, and that needs to be known.
Mr. Pedo?
Yes.
We just need to have a motion to continue.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to continue? Moved by Mr. Balastrea, seconded by Mrs. Sabetta.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did smell, although there was no stench that was there, I did smell from her property cigarette smoke, but I didn't complain about it. I'd like to say something else about this particular neighbor who really cast me in a bad light. Several years ago, she had no steps on the side of her house for about a year. The building department can verify how long. And at that time, there came a point where she hired a bricklayer to put in a brick, set a brick steps for her, and he was working after hours. He was working, he came in about 3:30. And so, the first day he came, her boyfriend was there, and she was at work, and he was going to help him, the bricklayer. So, the bricklayer came. So the bricklayer came and I was trimming the hedge at the time. And he told the boyfriend that he forgot his square and he would have to eye the bricks to make them square. So I called over the hedge and I said, "Do you need a square?" He said, "Yeah, you got one?" I says, "Yeah, let me run down the basement and I'll get you one." I got him the square. He was very appreciative, so was her boyfriend. They ran into another problem in the course of making the mortar for the bricks. The boyfriend had a wheelbarrow and they were mixing mortar in the back of the house because that's where the hose was. And so the wheelbarrow had a flat tire. And the first batch of mortar, the boyfriend was struggling with the heavy weight of the mortar. So I offered to pump the tire up with a compressor. He obliged and I pumped the tire up and it made his job a lot easier. And both he and the bricklayer were appreciative. Additionally, another, on a following day, the bricklayer needed to do some kneeling at the lower course of the bricks. And he didn't have a kneeling pad. I offered him one. He thanked me. The boyfriend thanked me. When the job was done, the neighbor came home from work and the boyfriend told her that I had helped them. And I was out in the yard. And she didn't even look my way. She made no effort of appreciation. It was like she never heard her boyfriend. So that needs to be known. And additionally, she also said in the 9/25 meeting that there were five cars in the driveway. Well, my question is, if there were five cars in the driveway, why did she want to buy the house? Additionally, she said, "There's now two and both are not running, one with no license plates that are legal." Now, for her to make that determination, she would have to trespass on my property to determine that. And again, that is a violation of my civil rights. She also talked about her parents, how her parents would be so upset with me if they knew how I was taking care of the property. And the counsel needs to know this. I met her parents when she moved in. In fact, if you check the records, you will find that the house at 6597 was in the name of her parents for three years. Three years later, on November, I believe it was 18 of 2014, she then took possession of the house. In those three years, I never had any problem with her parents. As I said, I met her parents, they were very nice to me, and there was never any complaints from them through the city. So there seems to be something wrong with this picture. Toward the end of her speech on September 25, she invited anybody to come out to my property to see the condition of it to prove that she was telling the truth. What right does she have to invite people to come on my property? She doesn't own that property, I do. And that is very disturbing to me. Now, both of these neighbors want the house demolished. And you may vote on some resolutions that may try to put that into motion immediately. Or maybe, if not in this meeting, a subsequent meeting. And I had also told this counsel in the 9/25 meeting that I had a standing court appearance on October 3rd, working with Judge Coletta. And I did attend that court appearance. He gave me some things to do. And one of the issues was gutters on the house. And I believe there was a, one of the councilmen in the 9/25 meeting, I believe it was Nino Monaco, brought up about gutter repair, in general gutter repair. Well, I have determined a contractor who will have gutters all around my house up by the end of this week. And he's done work for me before. And he had injured his back and he's now recovered from that. And I picked the color out for the gutters and he said that the gutters would be up by the end of this week. Now, I do have another court appearance beginning of next week with Judge Coletta. He wants to see my status of things that are outstanding. And so I'm hoping to have for him a good report. Now, if this counsel wants to demolish my house, this is going to be a problem. Because I have a right to a hearing on this matter before the court. And it would be unconstitutional for this counsel to sidestep the court ruling. And so I'm again asking the counsel to keep in consideration what resolutions they pass concerning my property, to keep in mind what I've said here tonight. Because, again, both the neighbors that I mentioned here want the house demolished. And that's really sad because the one neighbor, the first neighbor who spoke, I thought he was my friend. I was deceived. And I'll never be deceived by him again. I had just talked to him a short time earlier and I really thought he was my friend. In fact, he wanted me to give him some scrap steel. He was going to use it for his machine shop. Well, there's no more relationship there anymore after what he said in the 9/25 meeting. So I'm upset about this and it's been affecting my life in a great way. And I'm making progress to get, as I said, the gutters up and other issues that Judge Coletta has required of me. And I intend to meet the requirements that Judge Coletta has set forth in the various court appearances. So I'm asking this counsel to keep that in mind. And another thing, there were some questions that were asked by council members in the 9/25 meeting about what was accomplished. Well, all you have to do is go into the court records and you'll find what Judge Coletta ruled on that was already accomplished. So the judge isn't giving me a free pass and neither is the building department. And by the tone and the comments made by the two neighbors, it was like the building department wasn't doing their job. And that isn't the truth. So I'm going to see what happens. And I'm going to take every measure, legal measure necessary to protect my property. And I do have neighbors that do have concern for me. It's not all bad like those two neighbors made me out to be. So there are neighbors who care about me, who want me to stay in the house. And so we'll see what happens. God bless you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pedo. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak?
I don't want to speak, but I'd like to present something.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in the public portion this evening? Okay, it is now 7:40 and we will close the public portion. We'll move on to resolutions and we'll begin with Resolution 2023-90. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Resolution 2023-90, a resolution confirming the action of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Mayfield Heights in denying to Denver Barry on behalf of April Management Limited, 1592 Lander Road, a variance to construct a new accessory structure on the property, Cuyahoga County Permanent Parcel Number 861-27-011, 4,750 square feet larger in area than that allowed by the codified ordinances. Third reading.
Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Couple of notations about this. According to the city's codified ordinances, counsel has 60 days in which to act upon a recommendation from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And if counsel does not act within that 60-day period, then the determination of the Board of Zoning Appeals is confirmed. This was heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals on September 12th. So the 60 days takes you up to November 11th. This is the last meeting before November 11th unless there's a special meeting. So if counsel does not act by November 11th, then the determination of the Board of Zoning Appeals will be considered to be confirmed and the variance request will be denied. Secondly, Mr. Barry, on behalf of April Management, has submitted two additional packets of information to the city after the Board of Zoning Appeals had made its determination. And what I'd like is a motion by counsel at this point to add both of those submissions to the records so that we have a complete record. Am I going to get a motion?
Do we have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Mr. DeJohn, seconded by Mr. Balastrea. Roll call. Roll call on the motion.
Mr. Mano. Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mrs. Teres.
Yes.
Okay, I'm done. Now we're ready to do what counsel would like to do.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Monaco.
I have a little record question.
Sure.
Since the drawing has been changed from the original, shouldn't the project go back to the BZA for reconsideration?
No, that hasn't been requested and that probably would not be proper. What's before counsel is what was submitted originally, so counsel needs to consider that. If the applicant wants to make a different request for a variance. It's my understanding that there was a mistake. It's the same request, so counsel would be really asked to either vote on this this evening or table it.
So we are voting on a structure here that has 17-foot-high height of a building instead of the 11 that it's now changed to?
Whatever was requested from the Board of Zoning Appeals, that's what you're looking at. Not anything that's been changed since then.
Okay, okay. All right. I think that since the drawing has been changed, it should be resubmitted again for another consideration before it comes to us. Because we're trying to approve something now that it's no longer on the table for us.
Okay, let me clarify. The request has been made and considered by Board of Zoning Appeals. So now counsel is charged with confirming or reversing or modifying the Board of Zoning Appeals with regard to what was submitted. If the applicant wants to make another submission and say, "Look, I've changed it. I've made it less of a variance requested," then that can be done and that would go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals. But that's not what's before counsel this evening.
Okay.
So before us is the, we're voting on the initial BZA decision?
Yes.
To deny the variance?
Yes.
And the applicant will have the opportunity to go back to BZA, present his new drawings that we just received with the different heights, et cetera, if he wanted to do that?
Wants to request a second variance with different information, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Monaco, did you have something else?
No, I would like to ask Mr. Denver Barry if he would like to go back with a, you know, smaller building and see if he can get that approved rather than possibly being denied tonight on this 17-foot-high structure.
Mr. Barry, do you want to come forward and answer Mr. Monaco's request? Because tonight, we're going to have to vote on what's before us and not the new drawing. So...
Well, the new drawing, I guess if I heard it correctly, Mr. Murphy said you could modify it. In other words, I understand that the BZA doesn't want the building the way that it was originally explained. That's why I corrected it where it's not 17-foot eaves, it's 12-foot eaves. It's not a 17, 20-foot-high or 25-foot-high peak, it's only 16-foot peak height. So what I'm saying is, I would like to have it approved. And if you would like to modify it, I'm all for that. What I'd like to say is, tell me what you'd like me to build and that's what I will follow. I need a building. I think it's to our best, everybody's, you know, best interest. And I'm willing to build it the way you want me to build it. I just need to know what that is.
I think you've, Mr. Murphy, go ahead.
Counsel's determined what you are allowed to build by ordinance. You've determined that you don't want to build that, you want to build something different. So you have requested a variance from that ordinance. If you do not need a variance or get a variance, you can build what's permitted in the ordinances.
Well, I need a variance because I need a building larger.
You want a larger building?
A larger building.
Okay.
And instead of me, you know, going back to the drawing board, if the counsel says, "Yes, I'll approve this, but we don't want it any higher than 12-foot eaves." Or if we don't want it, we want this or that or any modifications, that's what I'd like to hear.
But it's in the ordinances now, how big you can build it and how tall you can have it.
Right.
You can have that without a variance. If you want something else, you need a variance.
Well, that's why I'm asking the counsel to modify it.
No, you submit what you want and counsel will review that after the BZA reviews it. Counsel's not going to tell you, "Yeah, we'll give you this or we'll give you that."
So counsel doesn't get to modify anything?
Modification has to be done by a resolution, which still has to be done within 60 days.
So we have to vote on what's before us tonight and the initial drawing that was presented. If you want to present the new drawing and you worked with Mr. Thomas, you'll have to go back to BZA and present your new drawing, which you could do the next time BZA has a meeting.
And, okay, if that's the way it is, I'll present a new one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barry. Okay, so this resolution is on third reading. So we need a roll call to approve.
Was there a first and a second to approve?
Oh.
There was no motion to.
Oh, so we don't need a motion?
No, there was none.
There was none. Oh, we need a motion. Oh, I'm so sorry, I thought we didn't need it. Roll call on the...
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
Is there a motion to approve? Didn't I say that? It's been a while since I've done this. Is there a motion to approve? You know, I am rusty. Moved by Mr. Monaco, seconded by Mr. Balastrea. So you understand we are voting on the decision of BZA to deny Mr. Barry for the initial drawing that was presented. If you are going along with the BZA in denying, you will vote yes. To overturn, you will vote no. Roll call on the motion to approve.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes, with the understanding that he's going back to the BZA.
Yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mr. Mano. Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. This motion has been moved. Approved. We'll go to... Yes. Of course.
One point of clarification. You asked council to tell you what they want. Council has enacted an ordinance saying the building can only be this size and this high. That's what is permitted in your zoning area. If you want anything different from that, then you have to submit a request to Mr. Thomas for a variance and that would go to the BZA. That's what I meant when I said council doesn't tell you what they'll approve. You have to say what you need, what your practical difficulty is in having a building larger than what council has said you are okay to build. Okay? Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that, that, you know, council doesn't tell you what they'll approve, you tell them what you need, what your difficulty is.
Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 2023-91. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2023-91, a resolution confirming the action of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Mayfield Heights in denying to Denver Barry on behalf of April Management Limited 1592 Lander Road a variance to construct an accessory structure on the property, Cuyahoga County Permanent Parcel Number 861-27-011, five feet higher than that allowed by the codified ordinances. Third reading.
Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. Mano, seconded by Mr. Monaco. Okay, as we've heard with regard to Resolution 2023-90 as well as this one, BZA has denied the applicant the variance as requested and the applicant has the ability to go back to BZA and re-present a new drawing. If we're going to agree with the BZA decision, you will vote yes. In denying, if you'd like to overturn, you will vote no. Roll call on the motion to approve.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. And this resolution has been adopted. We'll move on now to Resolution 2023-98. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2023-98, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bob Chapman Ford, Inc. for the purchase of two Ford Police Explorer vehicles for use by the Mayfield Heights Police Department and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mr. Balastrea.
Move.
Moved, seconded by Mr. DeJohn. Roll call on the motion to suspend.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. Mano. Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mr. DeJohn, seconded by Mrs. Sabeta. This resolution is for the purchase of two Ford Explorers for the police department. We've all received a memo from Chief Mealy with his request to purchase two hybrid Ford Explorers for the department. These vehicles will replace older vehicles currently in the department's fleet. And by purchasing a hybrid vehicle, the department will be able to cut back on fuel costs. Both of these vehicles have been priced through state bid pricing. Chief, would you like to add anything? We all have the information that you sent on pricing. Does anyone have any questions for the chief? Will you be, I have a question. Will you be selling vehicles? I'm sorry, going to make you come up to the podium anyway. Yeah, that was your question, okay.
In a roundabout way, yes. So the vehicles they're going to replace will be repurposed. Those vehicles that are going to be replaced will be sold off. So, you know, auxiliary cars will probably be sold off and maybe one of our school SRO cars will be sold off. And the cars that, these are going to replace will take the place of those vehicles.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, appreciate it. Roll call on the motion to approve.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. Resolution 2023-98 has been adopted. We'll move on to Resolution 2023-99. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2023-99, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Tim Lally Chevrolet for the purchase of the Chevy Silverado pickup truck for use by the Mayfield Heights Police Department and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mr. Balastrea, seconded by Mr. Mano. Roll call on the motion to suspend.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. Mano, seconded by Mrs. Sabeta. Again, the chief is requesting a Chevy Silverado pickup truck for the department. The total cost of the two Explorers on the Resolution 2023-98 and the pickup truck, all through state bid pricing, will be $155,000. This is an emergency measure as the lead time for the vehicles will be 10 to 12 months. Any questions? Mr. Monaco.
I have a question. Is the strike going on right now going to affect the timeframe of getting this vehicle even further or...
I don't have an answer for that one. I don't know.
Probably.
Yeah. Last time we ordered them, last time around this year, it took, I think we got them last month. So, you know, it took 11 months to get the vehicles in. So most likely it's not going to be any sooner. The pickup trucks, if you recall, last year, we tried to get a pickup truck and they're in such short supply, we didn't get one of them because we didn't get it in at the time.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Roll call on the motion to approve.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. Resolution 2023-99 has been adopted. We'll move on to Resolution 2023-100. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2023-100, a resolution authorizing the execution of extension agreements between the City of Mayfield Heights and the unions extending the statutory time periods required by Ohio Revised Code, Section, Chapter 4117, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mr. Mano, seconded by Mr. Monaco. Roll call on the motion to suspend.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. And do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. Monaco, seconded by Mrs. Sabeta. The extension agreements between the city and the unions, the current labor contracts expire on December 31st of 2023. This resolution will allow the mayor to extend the statutory time period required by the Ohio Revised Code to allow the city and the appropriate union representatives to negotiate the terms of the union contracts without the aid of a mediator. The mayor is also authorized to enter into extension agreements so negotiations can continue past December 31st of 2023. The terms of the negotiated contracts will be retroactive. Questions, comments?
I have one question.
Mr. Balastrea.
Just for the mayor, just from my own knowledge, mayor, does the union agree to this prior to this resolution being introduced? I would assume it does, but... They do.
Mrs. Fagan?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Well, Mrs. Fagan was shaking her head. I thought she wanted to add to that. Roll call on the motion to approve.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. Resolution 2023-100 has been adopted. We'll now move on to ordinances. 2023-22. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ordinance number 2023-22, an ordinance amending Chapter 1191 of the Codified Ordnances of the City titled Signs by amending Section 1191.02 regarding political signs and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Murphy.
And this has been referred to Planning Commission, so I would suggest this be placed on second reading to allow Planning Commission to review and comment. And that is, I read it.
You read it, so we just have to do...
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nope.
We have to do nothing. Okay. That's even better. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 2023-22. Nope, I apologize, 2023-23. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ordnance number 2023-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 1389 of the Codified Ordnances of the City titled Basic Standards for Residential Occupancy by amending Section 1389.05 regarding roofs. Second reading.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mr. Balastrea.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Sabeta. Roll call on the motion to suspend.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Murphy.
This was considered last meeting and Mr. Monaco had indicated that there may be some amendments that he wanted to make, and I'm not sure where that is.
Yes, the amendments are as follows.
Why don't you do a motion to amend?
Yes, let's do a motion to amend this section to read as follow. And the very top, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 1389 of the Codified Ordnances of the City titled Basic Standard for Residential Occupancy by amending Section 1389.05 regarding roof and siding should be added to that section. Then we go down to 1389.05 where it says roofs, garters, and downsides. It should read as follows, roofs, garters, downsides, and siding. And also on the fourth line where it says damaged or aged roofs shall not be patched, it should read damaged or aged roofs or siding shall not be patched. And those are the changes that we're proposing.
I'll make a motion to amend.
You second it.
I'll second.
Roll call on the motion to amend.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. Right, so now, right. So, do we have a motion to amend? Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
Move.
Moved by Mr. DeJohn. Seconded by Mrs. Sabeta. Roll call on the motion.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. This ordinance has been approved as amended. We will now go to ordinance 2023-27. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ordinance 2023-27, an ordinance amending Section 1191.02 of the Codified Ordnances of the City titled Permitted Signs and Declaring an Emergency. First reading. I'll continue, since this is a proposed amendment to the Planning and Zoning Code, it should be referred to Planning Commission.
So should we table this?
No, just leave it on first.
Leave it on first reading, okay.
Refer it to Planning, you're the chairman.
Ordinance 2023-27 will be referred to planning. And the next ordinance is 2023-28. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ordnance 2023-28, an ordinance amending Chapter 951 of the Codified Ordnances of the City titled Community Center to revise the rules for renting the center and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Is there, excuse me, is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mr. Mano, seconded by Mrs. Sabeta. Roll call on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Yes.
Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. Mano. Seconded by Mrs. Sabeta. This ordinance amends Chapter 951 of the Codified titled Community Center, revising the rules for renting the center. I would like to keep this on first reading or table this since Mrs. Snyder's not here and I know she would have some questions about this ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to table.
Yes.
Mrs. Sabeta.
Because we suspended it.
Because there was a motion to table it. That's what you're voting on.
Right. Mr. DeJohn made the motion to table, Mr. Monaco seconded. And Shinny should, roll call on the motion to table.
Mrs. Sabeta. Mr. Monaco. Mr. Mano.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn.
Yes.
Mr. Balastrea.
Yes.
Mrs. Teresi.
Yes. Ordinance 2023-28 has been tabled. We have no motions this evening?
We have no motions this evening.
So, no motions. Is there any new business or comments from council? Mr. Monaco.
I heard Mr. Pedro's statement a while ago and I just want to say that I never made a statement that he needed to replace garters on his property, so I don't know where it came from, but it wouldn't come from me, sir. Thank you.
Any other new business or comments from council? Do I have...
I forgot to mention one thing. This Friday is the chili cook-off. So I want to, you know, go on our website, very important event. We have to uphold our, we have to get behind our fire department, I should say. And that's this Friday at, it's at Highland Heights, right Chuck? Yep, okay. Just wanted to remind everybody of that, so...
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Balastrea, seconded by Mr. DeJohn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, our meeting is now adjourned.